Do more, do more, and be more.
Jason, would you like to do introductions?
Yes, round robin introductions. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Leadership team, left to right. Director of Strategy and Communications, Jeanne Allen. Executive Assistant, Tammy Jeffries. Director of Finance and Operations, Dan Baer. Deputy Director of Public Services, Shannon Peterson. And then we have the Executive Director of the Kitsap Regional Library Foundation, Wendy Kyle, and Director of IT and Facilities, Mike Rose. Absent tonight is Lucretia Robertson, Director of DEI and Human Resources. Thank you.
That was probably the fastest that we've done that. Thank you. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We'll move on to public comment, which we also don't have any public comment this evening. Moving right along to consent agenda. Included in the consent agenda, all matters listed within the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion of the Board of Trustees with no separate discussion. If there is separate discussion on any item in the consent agenda, it may be removed from the agenda and placed on the regular agenda by request. Included in this evening's consent agenda are minutes of the April 25th, 2023 Regular Board Meeting, a corrected payroll and benefit voucher for March 7th, replacing the voucher previously approved at the April 25th, 2023 meeting, payment of the April 2023 bills, including payroll and benefits vouchers and the blanket voucher for all the bills, and the surplus library materials being withdrawn from the collection for April of 4,003 items. And also in the consent agenda is the final 2022 State Auditor's Annual Report. Eric's going to speak to it a little bit later. Outside of that, is there anything requiring further discussion in the consent agenda? And if no, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Which brings us now to, we'll let them take a moment. Do you want to, should we have them go ahead and go, Shannon? Or should we give them a moment? Yeah, that's absolutely fine. So, we've had guests walk in, and we're going to circle back to this item. So, we're going to skip down to 7.2 on the Agenda of Presentations and take reports from the trustees. Anybody want to speak to their activities in the last month?
I attended the Manchester Community Open House on May 2nd. The, correctly, all the government organizations local to the Manchester area attended, plus the Manchester community groups. It was fairly lightly attended by the public, so I'm hoping we can advertise it better next year. But anyway, it was a, I talked to a number of the organizations, and it was interesting. Glad to attend. I also, on May 19th, I attended the Friends Appreciation Luncheon, and I think some of the others of you did too. It was really interesting. I got to meet some people I hadn't seen for quite a while, and it was over capacity, I think, in the room. It was really well-attended. And it was a good talk by Cy Montgomery and Matt Patterson on turtles mainly, but it was really interesting. A lot of things I didn't know. We have a couple turtles at home we've had for 35 years, and I didn't realize they talked, and I don't know, I just learned a lot of stuff I didn't know. And then yesterday, I was interviewed by Natalie Lambertjack from the Barsness Group, and it was regarding the feasibility study for the Port Orchard, Newport Orchard Library and Community Center. And that's going to be an amazing project if we get it done. It's really going to help the community. It's really needed. The Port Orchard Library right now is in the former post office building. It was never designed to be a library, and there's some structural issues, leaks and whatnot that have been happening over the years. So, it needs replacement, and the new library community center is in a great location. It's really going to be, really be neat. I think it'd be really appreciated by the community.
So, earlier, late last month, I had the pleasure of attending a meeting with Bainbridge Community Foundation, along with Wendy and Carrie, for a grant for summer reading. So, I had a great time there as well. And also, my kiddos had a great time at Comic Book Day. We got a new Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles fan in the house, so thank you very much for that.
Well, I doubled up on a couple of those things, too. It was awesome to be at the Friends of the Library Appreciation Lunch, but also it just gave me a chance to walk through the Paul's Boat Library. So, between that and my husband and I were also interviewed for the feasibility study. And I know that the post office wasn't intended to be a library, but they still all feel really charming and nostalgic when you walk through them. So, it was a good experience, and I think in both cases, you know, the staff are just incredibly welcoming when you do that, so, good. We will circle back. Shannon, if you'd like to introduce our presenter this evening?
Hello. So, I'm very excited. We've been talking a lot and do our best to really communicate some of the magic that happens when we build relationships with patrons, particularly over time in our reports. But sometimes it's really amazing to hear from patrons themselves. And when I was thinking about this, I've been talking to Lisa about a patron that we've known for many, many years, and it's just been so lovely and wonderful to hear that we were able to reconnect and reengage in some new activities. So, I will pass over to Lisa and Lynn Marie.
You try first.
Hello, Library Board. So, this is Lynn Marie. I'm Lisa, and we were thinking about the library together earlier before the meeting. Just so you know, Lynn Marie has been coming to the library since she was four years old. She would sit in Storytime with her big, bright eyes, and through the years, we've found each other at several different library branches. And so Lynn Marie's going to share a little bit about what she likes about the library, maybe some things that she hopes for from the library. She's also really interested in how the library as an organization is structured. I couldn't answer all her questions before we met today, so I told her that this would be a good place to try maybe one out, if you had a question. But I leave the floor to you, and we'll just talk about what you've used the library for.
Okay. Hello. Yeah. I usually use the library for the obvious thing, books. But like, I do a lot of research for school, and so I end up making a lot of purchase requests and to library loans, because, yeah, this, research is hard. I participate in Storytime, a lot of the crafts and STEM activities. And at Portrait, I watched a lot of the performances, like during the summer, I was younger. It's a little further away now, so I don't go as much. Yeah, I've been to Portrait, Sylvan Way, and Downtown Bremerton. I really want to go to other library branches, but maybe once I got my driver's license. Yeah, I really want to go to Silverdale, because it's brand new, but we aren't able to go for the opening, which is disappointing. Yeah. And, yeah, I really like the library. It's really comfortable, like, it's, it's just really nice. Summer programs are very important for me, because I always get bored during summer break. It's too long. That's my opinion. Oh, the Inspire Things, I kind of wish you brought back the bigger magazines. That's all right, because they're still like, all of like, the pictures are really cute. Like, I used to cut them out and put them on stuff. Yeah. I'm really looking forward to the college application help, because that's coming up for me. Yeah, and I really wish you guys had more research tools, because I've had to use other resources, like, my mom's an Embry-Riddle student, so like, login to her, like, Embry-Riddle account, do research. And if Embry-Riddle's looking at her research, it's going to be very confused on why I'm asking about the Black Death instead of airplanes, so, yeah. I also wish that my branch, the Downtown Bremerton branch, had more books, because I think I've read all the interesting ones, at least. Yeah. And also, if you don't mind, I do have a question. Ms. Lisa said that the city of Bremerton owns the downtown library branch, and the Friends of the Library own Manchester?
Yes, the Friends of the Library of Manchester own the Manchester branch.
And all the other buildings. I can't remember which. So, like, who pays all the bills? In that one, like, the property taxes and the utility bills and upkeep and stuff?
Dan, do you want to go ahead and answer her question?
Sure. Which, which location? Manchester?
Manchester, Bremerton.
I think Eric would probably like to respond. Manchester, we don't have to pay property taxes, because we're a nonprofit, and as far as paying the bills, the Friends of the Manchester Library have to raise money every year, maybe $30,000 a year to pay the utility bills and the heating and, you know, all of that. And we just put on a new addition to the Manchester Library, and the community pitched in for that, as well as the Friends. So, we spent, I don't know, probably over half a million, including what KRL put in. We put a new roof, we put solar panels on it, but anyway, the Friends basically support that library. We have a salmon bake, which is coming up on Father's Day. We serve about 800 people. That's one fundraiser. We have plant sales, and we have a bookstore there that's open whenever the library's open. It's just an honor system. So, anyway, the Friends, you know, raise money and support that library. And I think Bainbridge does something similar in a much bigger way, but, anyway.
For Downtown Bremerton, which is her home branch, like, what would you say, Dan?
The city pays almost all of those bills for it. They own the building, and we provide library service in return.
That's interesting. Does the government pay taxes on their own buildings?
No, we do not. We're exempt from that.
That makes sense. You're paying yourself. Yeah, that's everything I wrote down.
So, just so you guys know, Lynn Marie is like, a very advanced researcher. So, she really does use her in her library loans, and she is reading about the Black Death in detail, and we just don't have those books for her in our library, because they're so specific. But that's what's amazing, is that she's grown up in different levels that way, and now she's like, outgrowing the content that we generally carry in our collections. But she's still a hardcore summer learning participant. She's serving on the Commission of Children and Youth, and she is my longtime library buddy. So, thank you for giving us the time to share a little bit about her experience.
Thank you. Lynn Marie, I just have a couple of questions, and a statement first. So, first of all, thank you for addressing our board and leadership, and really talking about the impact of libraries. I know it's a little intimidating being in this room with, you know, the council here, but I really want to, thank you for the courage to talk about it. And secondarily, it's good to hear impact stories like yours and what the libraries have been able to provide for you, and just the zeal for the knowledge that you have about how the library operates, that's important to us, important to our community. The question I have for you is, what are you thinking about doing for your career? Because I think I'm seeing a potential library employee somewhere down the line.
Maybe in finance?
Correct. So, I mean, oftentimes, in my over 20-year experience in libraries, one of the routes to libraries is, you know, library patron, library volunteer, library employee. So, it seems natural that sort of the next jump for you might be to come into libraries, and if not, how can we help you achieve whatever goals you have if they lie outside of libraries?
Actually, I've been looking to the internship program at the library for, I don't know, probably next year. And also, right now, I'm thinking, I want to be a research scientist. My mom says if you get an engineering degree, you can get a research, you can do all the research scientist stuff, and you get paid more, so, that's probably what I'm going to go for.
Well, thank you. We always have a home at the library, and I hope you know that.
Thank you both. It's really important, we're going to be discussing later this evening, really a public engagement policy, and in the past, it's kind of been limited to public comment. Often, you know, not in this particular way, so we, I want to thank Shannon, because I think our discussion here last month helped her also to think about what are the other ways that we can connect with the public and different users of the library, and so excited that you're here. I hope you're just the first of many visitors to come share with us how you use the library and what's helpful and what's not helpful. And I love your, I love your story that you started so young, and it's exciting to see then that you're also looking to the library for assistance with, you know, just your college application and really what's clearly going to be lifelong learning for you. So, we appreciate you coming down here tonight and sharing with us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Just quickly, I would echo the gratitude for your bravery tonight. I don't want to embarrass you, Lynn Marie, but Lynn Marie's mother came with her little brother to my baby Storytime, probably, I don't know, 16 years? Couldn't have been 16, maybe 12 years ago, 13 years ago? And just the magic of seeing your mom form relationships and friendships with other library parents was the coolest. I think you all had just moved here around that time, and, or just kind of started coming in, and seeing that community build was so cool. And Lynn Marie's family was definitely one of our hardcore library families that we loved seeing all, every week. So, it's just, it makes my heart explode to see you today, and to know that you're still connected with Lisa and with our programs. So, thank you so much. Thanks again.
Thank you so much for, thank you so much for sharing. I'm glad that Eric got to talk about the Manchester salmon bake. It's really a good time, so I hope you can, you can make it out on Father's Day and see the library. I just had a couple of questions for you. If you had any feedback specifically, you'd mentioned college application, and you also mentioned more research tools. I'm wondering what you might suggest as far as, if you have any questions where you think the library could be helpful on college applications or research material?
Well, for research, I know that I am a heavy Jstor user, like, that's my default. I, I've used a couple other tools, but I found that Jstor's generally the most helpful for college. That's, entire thing's a little bit intimidating, yeah. So, I'm just really looking forward to having somebody to like, basically show me what to do, especially with essays, like, I like writing, but essays are a whole other beast, and it's, having college people read them is going to be even more intimidating. So, I'm really looking forward to having somebody who can like, show me how to like, go through the process, basically.
Any other questions? Thank you both. Thank you.
Thanks again.
We are now going to skip down to 7.3, the Finance Committee Report. Eric, would you like to discuss?
Yeah, we had our Finance Committee meeting earlier. There are no, nothing concerning, healthy cash flow and projections, no surprises, and the SAO Annual Report was submitted as well.
Any questions for Eric and the Finance Committee? If not, any questions for Dan on this month's financial statement presentation? Getting off easy.
I'd just like to say, this is the first time I've ever had a year-to-date percentage match the year-to-date actual. So, it's like my only moment for a mic drop.
I wish there was a name for it, though, Dan. It just seems like it would be so fitting. Good. Well, well done. Jason, the Library Director's Report, please.
All right. Good evening again. Kicking off with, April was busy, as always. We had lots of celebrations in April. We'll talk about May and June, but obviously, we've had a big May thus far with the unveiling of the website, and we'll give more of a detail on the impact of that once we get to June. But in the calendar month of April, we celebrated, really all of our library staff. And we celebrated, first and foremost, the foundation turned 30 years old. That's a big deal. Our foundation, as you know, is, yeah, we can clap up for that. The foundation being a critical and valuable partner for the library, it's really important. I want to thank the communications team for doing a sneak attack on Wendy and her team's office, and really decorating and providing a bit of a surprise for them when it came from their conference and their fundraising conference in New Orleans. They were treated to a big surprise with their office being just kind of throttled with balloons and the door being decorated. So, we just really want to reach out and thank the foundation for all of their support of library programs, library capital, and library staff, really. The foundation's been a critical partner, and its philanthropic efforts really throughout for multiple facilities projects. Foundation is critical for that. And, you know, the foundation is even more critical with looming financial challenges, increasing budgets, and, you know, we're going to have to rely on the foundation to be a valuable partner for us in the future. So, we really have committed to making sure that the foundation is, has all the support it needs to be able to thrive in the organization. And so, you know, we need to, we, our funding, as is laid out according to our financial projections, years and years down the line, because that's what Dan does. He projects finances. It's part of his job. We want to make sure the library's sustainable. And so, without knowing to a great degree of accuracy what those finances will look like, it's important to have a foundation as a partner. So, I just really want to underscore why it's important to have a library foundation. And I think that there's a general, not necessarily within our organization, but to the greater landscape, the importance of what a foundation does and how valuable it is. And just, you know, in layman's terms, library budgets are very heavy on salary and benefits. And so, once you get to salary, benefits, materials, what's left? There's, you know, the three big things we can call out that people know about are one book, one community, to the library, and summer learning. Three of our staple programs that are kind of hallmarks of this particular library system. You know, summer learning challenges and summer reading programs are pretty much symbolic of libraries in general, but, you know, the way we've done one book, and we'll continue to do one book, and particularly our third graders, which is a really impactful program for this county, and really has its roots, this type of program for this county. These programs wouldn't be possible in terms of the impact that they make without the foundation that we have. So, really want to underscore how important it is to have a foundation partner, you know, alongside the help we get from tax-paying dollars, obviously. It's important to have a foundation that can go out and raise both restricted and unrestricted funds, and be able to help the library with other goals. And so, really for us, that's adding more capacity to the foundation. It needs, you know, marketing help, because we have a busy marketing department now that has, you know, activities that need to happen for the library and the library staff. So, it's important to have a foundation, especially that can thrive with a, you know, more stout team and better support. And so, I've been committed since I've gotten here to being able to provide the resources organization, to be able to add more value to the foundation, and more support, really, so the foundation can add more value to the library. And so, we're committed to doing that. Foundation is a wonderful partner to the library, and just really want to underscore how important they are. And so, we celebrate Wendy, we celebrate Carrie, we celebrate Alyssa, and soon to be fourth person of the team that will be coming along, unnamed. And so, thank you. And then speaking of foundation, moving right into what they've done to year-to-date this year, I think finances in terms of funding from donors are up about 43% or so. And so, if I'm doing the math correctly, it's up year-to-date from this year to last year. So, that's really high impact with a small team. So, Wendy, if you want to speak more to that, certainly jump in. Is it Rhett?
There we go. Okay. I'll use this one. We've just, I feel like I said this at the last meeting, but we have just been very focused on all of the usual best practice strategies, so tackling sponsorship, grant opportunities, of course, our direct mail efforts. So, those usual strategies for annual revenue, we've just been very strategic and focused there, which is, of course, helping, as well as efforts around acquisition, so building our, building our community of donors, which is continuing to, of course, help with that, with that growth. So, that's all I have to add, I think.
Thanks, Wendy. So, moving on, and thank you again, foundation, for all that you do. And so, we really capped off the end of the month with, and I want to correct something I talked about earlier. I said that we had increasing budgets. We don't have an increasing budget. We have increasing costs with a pretty flat budget, and so, just want to make that clear. Caught myself mentally. And so, even more the reason to have a foundation, because to be able to offset rising costs, rising, you know, salaries, just because of cost of living, it's important to have, you know, a foundation partner to be able to help raise money for unrestricted, that can help with, you know, library programs and other things that our library staff need too, because they count on the foundation to be able to fill the gaps, especially gaps when it comes to assisting for community-wide needs. And so, we've already seen that impact throughout the year, and the foundation being able to, you know, help librarians out with various community engagements that we haven't had the finances to, you know, fund. So, thank you, foundation. And National Library Week was celebrated the last week of April. The foundation took gift bags to all of the staff in all of our locations, so that definitely had high impact, and our leadership team followed suit with flower arrangements and cards to every location. And so, I think that, you know, gestures like that go a long way towards showing the appreciation for our staff who put in the work every day. So, we're grateful for them, and we celebrated them the last week of April. And we celebrate them every day. It's like, you know, Mother's Day, or Father's Day, or any other day, you have a day where you, or a week where you celebrate, but we try to let the library staff know we appreciate them all the time, but it's important to recognize them when those particular weeks come up. I want to move us to facilities. We've got a couple of things happening with facilities. One of them, it needs to be mentioned now, and it's Bainbridge Island closure. And so, the reason for the closure, which will occur for a two-week period in June, I think the 12th through 24th, is that our partners with Bainbridge and Lynn Marie, another situation, is that the Bainbridge Public Library is not owned by Kitsap Regional Library as well. So, Bainbridge Public Library handles everything for that particular facility. So, that's an opportunity for elevator modernization. And so, since there's a, you know, captive window of time with those two weeks, and we're going to have the building close anyway, a building partner wants, wanted to take advantage of that closing to do some more work that's needed. So, it'll be work like, you know, parking lot work in terms of paving and shoring up our parking lot, and then as well as painting and a few other tasks. Mike, if you want to add a little more value to what I've just said, you probably have a few more details than I have.
I think you covered most of it. Elevator modernization is the, is the real meat behind this closure in terms of the elevator lift that is there. lift that is there is no longer supported by the manufacturer or in terms of parts availability and things like that. So we're, we're doing some critical upgrades to the elevator to continue its service well into the future. At the same time, the upper, the main parking lot will get two coats of asphalt sealant to seal it up, and then it'll get restripped following that. We're working on, doing some work on the community room itself, going to be repainting the community room, touching up potentially stained carpet areas, working on some stained ceiling tiles to fix that, kind of just spruce up that room for the community use. It gets a lot of use with art displays and just general community use. So with use comes some abuse, and so, we're going to try and do some cleanup and fixing in there while that's going on. In addition to that, the rest of the work that we'll be doing in there during that two-week period is, on the facility side, just kind of some basic maintenance stuff, working on cleaning up some electrical issues that were identified in an inspection and trying to repair some accent spotlights that haven't worked for years. But, like I said, the gist of that work will be the elevator work, which also has some HVAC work associated with it, major electrical work associated with it, and change out of the fire sprinkler, not the sprinkler, sorry, the fire protection system, the fire alarm panel and things like that. So all of that's being worked on.
And if I could just quickly jump into this conversation, the library will be completely closed the first week, June 12th, but we will be offering curbside service the second week. So right after Juneteenth, we'll kind of move into that phase, because the building will be a little bit more accessible at that time.
Thanks, Shannon and Mike. So moving on, as you know, the community, connecting is a big part of my role, and I continue to do that. And part of the community role is serving the internal community. And so, most of you know, my goal this year is to work in every location for at least a day to get a snapshot of the worker experience. So I'm a firm believer in user-centered experiences, and so, both as a patron, and so as a library director and a library worker, all of our workers should be patrons, should be using our services. Along with that, as a library director, I need to step into the role of what it means to be a library worker in all of our locations. And so, you know, this job, I take seriously, and so, what I want to do is experience everyone's role. And while it's a short window of time, it gives me some data that I can use to be able to, you know, increase satisfaction of the library, and quite frankly, to increase or to make better processes and procedures throughout the library. So I've already done three locations, downtown Birmingham. I've done, last month I did Port Orchard in April. This month, I've done Manchester, and I'll talk a little bit about that next month. But at Port Orchard, I had a really good day. Started off with attending a staff meeting at 8:00 in the morning. Staff had a really good staff meeting. I got to watch their internal staff processes and how they go about building community with staff, and really how they go about, you know, increasing engagement around the library. So it was good to see those mechanics and really just to be a person that was there to be able to ask questions from a library director perspective. Then after that, it was just really just being a regular, everyday library employee. I participated in two back-to-back storytimes, got to have community with staff in the lunchroom, which was great, got to work the service desk for two hours, got into like a much longer reference than I needed to. And typically, we try to limit reference interactions, so I probably wasn't a good model in that. But a person needed help, and I think why most of the people are in libraries is because, obviously, we like to help. But what typically happens in a situation like that is, you know, it's hard to turn off that helping behavior when somebody is really needy. In this particular instance, a woman needed help, because she just couldn't transfer all of her Libby information from one device to another. And so, what I thought would be a five-minute interaction turned out to be like a 45-minute interaction. But, you know, it's really gratifying to be able to help somebody and to be able to just have them to be so gracious that we're able to do something that I think, you know, is really second nature to us. And I like technology. I like figuring out technological puzzles. So for me, it was very gratifying. And, you know, the patron did offer money afterwards, which I explained, you're already paying us. You pay, you pay your tax bill, so thank you. But it's good to see, you know, also got a chance to meet a patron who spends basically every day at Port Orchard, who's written a couple of medical books. That was a really impactful story. He just, you know, talked to me about how much of an impact the library is to him in that he can make lots of copies, he's able to use Wi-Fi, he's been able to do all of his research. For a couple of, you know, pretty important books that he's written, because he had a personal loss in terms of his life of someone who passed away of cancer. And so, without identifying a patron, I'm just going to keep it pretty nebulous. But, you know, really being able to get there and be able to engage in, hearing stories like that is important, too. And just really getting a sense of how the community embraces a Port Orchard library. So it was a good, it's a good way to, and a valuable way to spend my time on a monthly basis. So I'll be continuing that process throughout the year, and hopefully, that will transition into a couple of closed departments, too. And I believe that data like that is important to help inform me of, you know, the total picture of what the library really is, because sometimes, again, I've said this before, and it's going to sound like a broken record, it's easy to manage from a seat at a computer, but until you experience the entire library. And that's what type of library director, actually, when I applied for the job, I talked about a little bit, is getting into that experience of being a worker, because that's how I started my career as a worker. And so, being able to experience what each department goes through is going to be important for me. And that, last but not least, we will, I'm being veiling, and we will talk about it next month, it's an annual report that will be reflective of the year 2022, because it's important for the library to take stock of, you know, what it's done the previous year. And so, annual report hadn't been done here in a while for various reasons, but, and so, we will have an annual report a bit late, but it will be, we'll push the button on that in a couple of days with much help from our communications and marketing team. Thank you, Jeannie. They've taken a vision that I've had of creating an annual report and really putting a nice finish on that. And so, really proud of that work and really proud, it's reflective of all the work of, not only this team as a leadership team, because this is my brain, but it's, you know, people like Lisa and people like Lynn Marie, who are, embody really what the public is. And so, it's really reflective of them at the end of the day. And so, you will see that report soon, and you'll have it in your hands, and I'll be able to answer questions on that report with leadership team next month. And that should have been penultimate. Finally, next month, I will be appearing virtually, because I'll be at American Library Association Conference, and Dan will be in Hawaii. And so, you'll have Shannon here. If we can't, Shannon will act in our behalf and run the, run the meeting, but we'll be here. Any questions? That's my report.
Any questions for Jason? It's a great report. Thank you, Jason. Next, we have no correspondence. Next on the agenda is Old Business. This is, I think, the third meeting now that we're sort of percolating this issue, this item. And so, I'm going to open it up to both colleagues on the board, but also the staff present in the room, and really an invitation to the public that between now and, you know, the next few weeks or whatever, we'd like to kind of be able to finalize this piece of work, if not next month, then the month after. We talked previously, and it's, so what we're looking at, we have a multi-page document that now kind of takes a lot of research, just from a lot of other, looking at a lot of other generally public comment guidelines from other public institutions and other libraries. But also have tried to broaden this a little bit. So as it stands now, and this is still open for evolution, right now, what we have is really a draft that includes what is it that we were trying to accomplish in approaching this work? And it's currently then holding several different considerations that could be incorporated into a board policy for public engagement that would be a little bit more encompassing and a little more general, and then some very specific guidelines that would be posted. And the reason why we kind of approached the work this way, which is still open for deliberation, is policies require, you know, when you go to update them for any level of specificity, then you have to pull them back out and you have to reapprove them. So it was like, can we keep the policy somewhat general and put all of the very specific information that guides how we take public comment, how we would manage public comment, and the specificity around how the technology might work and the location of we are, we're separate. However, while Gina isn't with us this evening, she did review this before this meeting, and her question was, this looks duplicative. Why are we doing it this way? So with that, I'll just open it up to anyone in the room for just reflections, comments, you know, things you don't agree with, maybe things we have not yet incorporated or thought about including in terms of being able to move this piece of work forward.
I think it looks really good. I had one question. Under E, public comment, second paragraph, last sentence, it says, "Public comment is not taken on individual agenda items during the meeting." And I know it means not during anything except public comment time, but the way it reads here, it sounds like it's not during the meeting at all. And so, I wonder if we could kind of clarify that a little bit.
We can. So those are also just the kinds of things we're looking for, like mixed total sense to me, but when you actually read it later, it doesn't. So good, good, good notation, Eric, in terms of what is it that we specifically mean by that?
Yeah, overall, I thought it was, it was also good, and I think, to clarify, my understanding of kind of the difference between policy and guidelines, policy being kind of rules of engagement and guidelines being things that we can update and that can evolve, maybe without a vote, but are more about assisting folks and kind of evolving with the times. I think, you know, a lot of the correspondence that I recall at the beginning of COVID was, you know, requesting that meetings be, you know, whether it's recorded, excuse me, transcribed or so forth. So, excuse me, I think some of the things that I was focusing on were somewhat covered, like in policy, "See assistance for access accommodation." BOT is intent to support a welcoming environment for everyone, including accommodating special need requests. Says to request access accommodation, please see our guidelines for public comment. I didn't, excuse me, really see anything in the guidelines for public comment where that was mentioned specifically, but I'm wondering if there's kind of a broad, kind of, you know, as technology evolves, as the community needs evolve, we are always seeking the best way to accommodate. And so, kind of giving leeway, I do like the mention of like, good intent, and we always intend, we do not intend to prohibit anybody from speaking, but just showing that we're flexible, I think is an important part and kind of opens things up for the guidelines. So it's not, we're not, we don't have to come up with a policy that's so rigid about how we communicate, but we can evolve over time. We have the freedom to do that.
This is a good area, and actually, one that's not fully fleshed out either. This, this particular criteria around assistance is twofold, Eric. I think it's, it's generally that we intend to fully use technology to the extent that it's available to us to encourage access to the meeting. But, but really, this was something that Lucretia had advanced as well, which is recognition that we might have to go the extra mile and would want to do that, to offer specific accommodation for individuals. And I think what we really need at this point is probably for the staff to take that particular criteria up and discuss internally what's within reasonableness for us. Is it, is it materials? You know, is it, is it translations? Is it, I don't really know specifically how far we can reasonably go, and so, what are those things? I know when Lucretia advanced this, she was really also thinking about wearing her hat as well, both in HR, ADA, but the DEI world as well, and to have these things also line up as they would in the library for, for patrons. So that's definitely an area that, you know, we're not really in a position to decide the details of that, but would look for guidance from the staff in terms of what that might mean. And I think the other consideration there as well was, at this point, the executive assistant to the library, to Jason, really is also the executive assistant to the board. And one of the questions raised, does that really stay within the role of the executive assistant, who's also the board coordinator? Or does somebody else in the organization really wear an ADA coordinator hat to kind of handle those specific requests? Again, I don't think, I think we really need to look to the team to help guide us in, how can we progress in that area, but recognizing also, you know, that we may not be able to do everything. There's going to be some things we can do and some things we can't. I mean, even, I was looking even in the budget, this is just one example, even to be in this location, which is absolutely the right thing to do, to help support access to the process and to the board and to what we're discussing, comes with a significant cost over our past practice of simply meeting in a room in the library. So we want to be as accessible as possible, but recognize also, there's going to be some constraints, but we don't know where we would even start with that. So that's a, that's a good area that needs some further clarity. Other comments or questions? Sounds like there's support for keeping it clearly in a policy framework that we would have that would be a little bit more expansive, and then determining particularly when it comes to specific engagement within one of these meetings, how, you know, what that would look like. So we can, we can pursue that, okay? How about staff, everybody? Well, and we don't need to limit it to today, but this is something we do want to keep moving. So if, if after this evening, and this is an invitation to people who may be watching, if after having a chance to look at that, to go ahead and, you know, now's the moment, right, to be able to really help influence the policy. And even, I do want to point out, because I've been on the board since 2020, and this is very awkward, I must say, circumstance, we sit in a room alone, for the most part. We'd love people to come, actually. It would make it feel a little bit more natural. But also, we were really in a mode of hearing presentations and then moving on, and hearing presentations and moving on. And so, I think even being thoughtful about, and we're using this as an example, about how we bring something forward and open it up for input and discussion, we do some work on it, we bring it back for some more discussion, that process alone is also important. And I think it's important for when the staff are going, you know, when they want the board also to be engaged or to weigh in on stuff, to consider also that pacing. It was very common when I first arrived here that, that, you know, policies would come, you know, really well done, that's what you need the staff to do, and ask questions, but there really was an expectation, you were going to look at something in preparation for the meeting and approve it at the meeting. And I'm not sure that that cadence actually allows generally for broader engagement. So I think kind of recognizing we're going to have to slow things down a little bit to account really for this cadence of looking at stuff, talking about it, and then not taking action on it until the next time, so that we also can provide opportunity for the public and the community to also have a look at that stuff. So, good. Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to add a couple of cents on the topic, and I appreciate, just to dovetail on what you said about process, I certainly appreciate the opportunity to, first of all, have board meetings where there is a process and there's an opportunity to just not come in and, you know, have presentations and then be gone. A board should be a community where we can have some give and take and have some, you know, organic discussions about the library. And quite frankly, the library board and the library, library trustees. the library. And quite frankly, the library board and the library trustees and the library trustee meetings are an invitation to the community, to be a part of the community. And so, having said that, you know, the impetus really to talk about this was a request from the community to have, you know, more accessibility in terms of access to the board meetings. And so, you know, in terms of the actual achieving that goal, we know that we can. And I just want to underscore that this, we have to have process behind everything. And like, that's not the part that's fun for everybody. It's like, we have to have process, we have to have guidelines, we have to have guardrails. But at the end of the day, I think what's important in this for the community, and the community is whom I'm speaking to right now, we invite you to be a part of this board meeting. And I would implore all of us, the library community, because we'll take input on what guidelines we've set forth, we'll make our adjustments. I've already talked to Mike about, you know, process and procedure and technology and how we can, you know, engage that and to be able to capture the most folks to be here. I would implore us to put that in place by July, and so that we can, you know, at least have more people have more access, and we have some type of general framework by how we can get people to be accommodated in this space who also need, you know, who need accommodations. And so however we could do that in the, you know, in a basic way that we can do that, given the limitations of this particular facility and the technology that we're working with, I would implore us to have that engaged by July's board meeting. And so, that's it.
So Jason, just as a matter of process, can we, at this point, because certainly Mike, and, I mean, really everybody, but the level of specificity that will be required at this point in terms of spelling out, well, what is the accessibility, what does this facility offer? I know we're recording, getting that lined out, taking it back to the leadership team, and really talking about what is it that we can also incorporate or offer in terms of accommodation. It feels like at this point, if we give this a handoff, you know, to you for some work with the leadership team to kind of move it forward to the next step potentially, you know, in a little bit more final form, and we can wait to hear what members of the public might offer up for consideration as well. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And we will, you know, take it around our leadership table and discuss and get input from our staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, the next portion of the agenda is under new business. The board members are going to go into a short executive session, probably 15 minutes, although we're not a very talkative group tonight, it might be less. Maybe we should start with 10 minutes, and then if we need a little bit extra time, we can pop out and ask for that. We're going to go into executive session because we're going to be reviewing the library director's 2023 performance goals, and then we will come back out and report on that activity, and then finish the last of the agenda items. So I would imagine, Mike, I'm looking at you, in terms of our ability just to go into the conference room. Okay. Okay, we'll go into recess.
How about we come back in one minute?
Employee happens to be the library director. We really, this began when we hired Jason in, over a year ago, was really fleshing out what were the expectations, working with the community, what was the expectations, what were the immediate priorities. We also then used last year an outside consultant, the same individual who'd helped, frankly, recruit Jason to the position, but also then had worked with him, to design a process of performance review that was inclusive of not only board of trustees input, but we literally just see, you know, we see a slice, we don't see the whole picture. But to come up with a process that then also took feedback from Jason's direct reports, that they could provide that independently and anonymously, and the consultant then worked to sort of pull themes out of that that could be used. And the feedback we also then got out of that is because outside of the priorities that had been set for Jason or for any new library director as they were coming in, were a handful of priorities in the job description. And so that is what we used last year through the performance appraisal process. And in preparation, as we look forward to that review process again at the end of the year, this time, which is actually, which is actually new in the library system, the board is working with Jason to identify, you know, a handful of very specific goals, four to six goals, that complement the work in the strategic plan, that may complement the work of members of his leadership team, but are also beyond, you know, the day-to-day of your job description, or even the work that the rest of the leaders are doing. So what is the work that is uniquely dependent on Jason as the library director to either create the culture or to advance an initiative, that if he wasn't here to do the work, you know, that thing just wouldn't happen at all? So it is a bit of a, it's evolving, it's an ongoing process. And I think the larger message here is that the board is taking their, all of our responsibilities, not only to one another, but to the community and to Jason as well, to really provide an ongoing environment of sort of mutual accountability with a clear process, which we'll be developing in terms of how are we working with the library director in meeting our commitments really to the community about the impact of KRL across the region. So we've spent some time talking, we've got some more work to do, but just really wanted to then let the public know what we're doing. So Jason, I don't know if you want to speak to this a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I can't add anymore, other than the message I would give to the public is, it's an honor be a, have a process like this that keeps me accountable. I think as the chief executive officer of a library, then, you know, the responsibility of mine to be on straight and narrow and to, you know, have good work quality and to be responsible to my community, that needs to be out and upfront, and there needs to be a process by which, you know, all of my actions can't be done without impunity. So I think, you know, as all of us are, I hold my leadership team members to the same standards that I'm being held to is important to me. And so I think the real message for the community and the taxpaying public and to our library community internally is that I welcome this process. I recognize that it may not be a process that is familiar to the organization, but I think one that I'm glad the board took the, you know, recommendations of the consultant to employ this process. And so I just really want to say I'm grateful that there's a process like this because it helps me to stretch. Because what I'm quite frankly asking my leadership to do is stretch, and what I've asked them to do is to grow with me. And sometimes that growth, I can tell you, they won't tell you, maybe they will, it's uncomfortable. And I recognize that. I've been pushing, but, you know, as we've seen in the training, and I think, I didn't recognize this until we went through, we've been going through this internal training on perceptive intelligence, it's okay to push, it's just not okay to push against somebody. And so I'm pushing for them, and sometimes I think pushing seems like a negative word, but I think when we're pushing in the right direction, and ultimately the goal is to produce quality library services for people and a world-class library system, I think it's okay for me to be held accountable and for me to feel uncomfortable. So I think that's the last message I'll say. I'm okay with being uncomfortable, I'm okay with being under the microscope, and I'm okay with having 360 evaluations, because quite frankly, you know, I was hired to bring some impact to the organization. I recognize that when I got hired, and I recognize it in all the interviews that were done. And so I welcome that, and I'm glad we have a process like this that we can all grow from. So that's really it. I think, you know, what you said is right, the goals are evolving, and they may change based on what's happening in the library climate, it may change based on what's happening with personnel. And so, you know, ultimately, we have calls and we have processes by which we communicate. And so the accountability is both in these rooms and outside of these rooms in terms of, you know, how we communicate, what's happening in the library, and what kind of updates I give you based on what's happening. And so I think for the community to understand that it just doesn't happen once a month. This is the ultimate result of all the work we do throughout the month in communicating and talking about what's happening in the library, you know, what happened two days ago, what might be challenges coming up, and so to understand that the process is fluid, and so the work is always happening. And that's it. I really, I am happy that there's a process like this, and I welcome the challenge, and I like challenges.
Any of the rest of you want to comment? Marwan, you were leaning in, I thought you were, I thought you were getting ready. I think the other thing that's really important, and you just mentioned that, is, you know, we've all been a part of a process where you had to set your goals at one point, and they felt really rigid in some respects, and, you know, you lived a little bit in fear, did you make the goals, or did you not? And the reality is, is that productive change is uncomfortable. I worked in a place at one point that had new leadership, and the mantra at the front of it definitely was, okay, we have to get comfortable with being uncomfortable, because that's where the growth happens, and that's where change happens. But we also recognize that things happen along the way, and we want this to be part of an ongoing discussion, because circumstances do change, and different things do happen that may cause one goal to be, you know, move more ahead than another goal might be. So I think the message we definitely want the public to know is that we do take our role really seriously about being a partner to Jason, with Jason, in a form of mutual accountability, to make sure that in fact, we are all delivering value to the public. And our one instrument to do that, of course, is Jason, and then he's really got the rest of what is an incredible, fabulous staff from the leadership, you know, right through the branches where we see people. So more on that as we go forward. So thank you, Jason. And then finally, we're going to move to another item of new business. We've asked Jason to talk also about the updates in preparation for collective bargaining.
All right. It's that time of year again. I hesitate to say year, but we just did this last year. So normally, it's an every three-year process, but because we're overdue, we're back to the table with our union partners to negotiate a new collective bargaining agreement, which our current one expires at the end of this year. And so just really want to provide the board of trustees an update on what that process has been like thus far, and what we can expect moving forward. And so, first of all, I want to really outline, I think, my philosophy. When I got here, I'd had a bit of experience as a unionized employee in Chicago, and having worked closely as a unionized employee and understanding the perspective of unionized employees. And I think, you know, using that perspective here to try to touch base with, and I haven't been the only one that's done that, all of our staff have reached out and been partners with our union staff. So I don't want to say that that's, you know, just been a feature of, you know, my role, our entire leadership team does. But really, one of the tendencies of my leadership is to outline a process where we can have collaboration. And so one of the things I saw when I got here, quite frankly, is, I'll just put it out on the table, it wasn't a collaborative environment. And so my goal has been to create a culture of consistent collaboration so that we can achieve goals. That doesn't mean that there won't be discord within that process, because you can still have disagreements, as long as you have a path that propels you moving forward, that's what the organization needs. I believe in pushing forward and not being stuck in a lot of, you know, you know, hamster spinning over issues that we can, you know, either put aside and tackle easier ones, and/or, you know, just kind of move into a process where we can get some help to solve them. Because sometimes two parties just can't solve a disagreement, and you need help. Having said that, negotiations really don't start when you get to the negotiation table. They are an ongoing process month to month. So how that looks day-to-day is that whenever we have issues come up, we have a team inside the organization that typically handles those communications. And that's typically our labor relations specialist, our director of human resources in DEI, and quite frankly, and it's our director of finance and operations, deputy director of finance and operations, Dan Baer. So those three people, and communication really comes out of one of those people, it's our labor relations specialist is the point of contact. And so then we have labor management meetings, which happen monthly, and those are used to really tackle ongoing and current labor issues, which then sets the table for getting into labor negotiations. So last Thursday, we had a session that was put on by Perz, and it was, Perk, I'm sorry, it was a session around engaging in more productive practices of communications for the benefit of reaching, you know, consensus agreements. And so what that process looks like, and I'm just going to explain it a little bit, we are interested in really having a collaborative relationship, and so we need a collaborative process to be able to do that. So Perk put on, I think, a really neat training for us, for an essay "us," meaning the labor negotiations team on the management side and a labor negotiations team on the employee side of the table. We came together to really have a facilitated discussion about how to reach consensus agreements. And so basically, it's really like a five-pronged process to do that. And so, and basically what it involves is figuring out what problems you need to solve. So collaboratively, what is the question? And then after that, it's what are the common and shared interests? And I think that's one of the biggest things that happens at a negotiation table, is often it's, these are the issues that we're presenting, and then one side is either pushing against or has a completely separate view on them. And so I think where the real switch is here is, what are the common things that you can get out of it? What are the commonalities that each side sees? And so oftentimes, that can be best done by having a facilitator happen in the room to help pull that out. And so the other part of it is that then you have a period of brainstorming by both sides to really discuss how those common interests can really be laid out and be one interest. And so, right? And so, yes, by each statement we've put out, we've figured out, like, those two things, they may say two different things, they may be actually one thing. So then let's figure out how we can put one solution on the table. Then lastly, you know, applying the standards of what happens in the organization in terms of our rules and regulations, and what the contract language looks like, and the labor laws, what are the standards we have to evaluate it by to actually reach the actual solution or consensus? And then how this really looks different than regular negotiations is that it's really a shared commitment to information sharing, because there are no hidden agendas here. We're putting all the information out on the table. One side or another is not waiting and withholding information and then getting to the table and then surprising the other. It's generally putting everything out in the front and being transparent. And, you know, quite frankly, this is the part I want to harp on, is one of the things that was put out most to me when I got into the organization was a lack of transparency, either perceived or real, from administration. And so I think that having a process that prides itself on transparency is going to be important, not only for management, but for labor as well. So to have both sides put their issues out on the table, what that really means is that there has to be a process of trust. And so one of the things that we want to do is to trust each other. Labor has to trust management and vice versa. And so in order to do that, there's a bit of vulnerability that happens in a space like that, because you have to, you know, allow yourself to be open enough to be vulnerable and to, you know, maybe say you're scared from, you know, either one side or another. Like, how is this really an issue that frightens you? Is it because you think management's out to... Is it because you think management's out to, I don't know, you fill in the blanks. I don't want to propose a scenario that, you know, someone might think is actually happening, but, you know, I think at the end of the day, what makes this process, I think, a really long-lasting one, and that's really it, is that you reach more, you know, firmly build agreements when you can work from a collaborative space, and they don't fall apart, because they're built with a firmer foundation than if you just reach consensus because you retired, right? You reach this consensus because you felt beat down and were just ready to get this thing over with. And yes, you could have a process like that, but at the end of the day, they're not going to hold up, because you're going to be right back into labor management meetings when the contract negotiations are over, and you're going to be bickering about things that you thought you understood but didn't, because at the bargaining table, maybe you didn't have a full understanding of, you know, the implications of that particular article and what it meant for you. So if you think if we can break down each article like that and we can understand why it's important to both sides, lay out the question and build a real framework for how to solve it based on common interests and collaboration, then what happens is it's a more peaceful environment after labor negotiations, because then we aren't hashing those things out in labor management meetings. So I have a real investment as a, you know, director of this organization that puts us forward through a process like this. I think our, you know, union partners by them agreeing to come to the table and certainly have an interest in seeing this process out, and I think it's important for the organization long-term to have a process like this, because the last thing I'll say about this is, it can, and I didn't mention, it's called interest-based bargaining. So if you didn't guess what the process is called, it's interest-based bargaining. All of our interests are the library. Management interests are no different than, you know, labor's interest. They're the same, they just look differently. And so I think that those are the tenets of interest-based bargaining in a nutshell. And the last thing I was saying before I went back to that is, I think what will happen in this process is that those will move forward into solving day-to-day problems in the organization, because sometimes what we're hearing is that we've had a problem in the organization, we were stuck, but we didn't work it out with you, we didn't go to human resources, we didn't go to our frontline managers, we didn't write to the union because we felt like you were abusing us. And it's like, wait a minute, did we even talk about it beforehand? So I think, first of all, this process, well, I think, you know, it will underscore that we want to be at the table with you day-to-day. If you have a problem, you don't understand something, email us, call us, let's talk it out before we even get to the point where it gets contentious. Because if we're about building community and relationships, it starts at day-to-day work. So I'm glad that this training was identified by Nancy and HR and that, you know, it was important that Nancy was able to get everybody to the table, and I really want to give her a lot of credit for that. And then Dan was also there, so Dan, if you want to add anything that you think I left out about the process before we open it up for questions for the trustees, that's a process essentially will start in earnest on Thursday. We start negotiations Thursday, and we have a number of dates lined out, and so they'll be in person. I think that's the other thing that'll make a difference, is that negotiations will be in person, I think having community there where we're able to, you know, see one another, we can talk to each other as human beings in person creates a better atmosphere. And so we saw that last week. We actually had lunch together with the bargaining team on the other side of the table, we got a chance to do some community icebreakers, we got a chance to work on problems together. We all sat alternately, where, you know, each management member had to sit next to a labor member. And so the other, last piece of this I didn't mention too, is that this, people leave their titles out of the room, so this is all predicated on you just leaving your facilitator mold out of it. So nobody acts as a single-spoke person in this space. Everybody collaborates as, you know, team members. And so I think that has a lot of real value and power. So I'm excited, as you can tell, I'm giddy, I can keep talking about it and keep us here probably another hour, but I will, for the sake of everybody's families, get us out of here. Any questions? Or Dan, did you have anything to add?
No.
All right. Did you have any questions about the process or?
The question that I had was just from your perception, one, how do you feel it's going so far, and also, what is your perception on how they feel that it's going? Are they optimistic as you are?
I can't answer if they feel as optimistic as I am. The team will probably tell you, I'm always optimistic, I'm Mr. Optimistic. I think, you know, to seriously answer your question, I think the feeling that I'm getting in talking to, the sampling of staff I've talked to, isn't scientific by any stretch of imagination. I think we're in a good place of culture inside the organization. We've done a lot of work on communication, a lot of work on process. Yeah, do we have times where we slip back? Yes, but, you know, life isn't, you know, linear. You know, you take forward, sometimes you may take a couple steps back, but as long as we're gaining traction, that's the important thing to me, is that we're learning. And this is the last thing I'll say, Marwan, is we have to have good intent, and so right intentions are important for me as a person, those are the values I have as a human being. And so what I want people to understand is that administration, by virtue of my leadership style, and they all had it when I got here, there's a lot of good intent here. Sometimes intent is misperceived, and so we really, you know, want a process like this because it uncovers everything, you know, and it create, it, you know, puts to bed the idea that there are secret agendas, and we can be as open as anybody needs to be in this process. So I think there was a lot of goodwill built in that session, because it was a six-hour day full of good conversations, and I'm hopeful that that will continue until Thursday, when we open up negotiations. And we'll continue, because, you know, the idea is that we, every session, we have breaks together, we're there. It will have times where each party has to separate and, you know, discuss issues, but this process will be done around reducing the ability to have caucuses, because those are used to separate more than they are to bring together. Caucuses may happen, just naturally based on, you know, certain conditions, but I really feel optimistic about this process, and I hope, you know, our team on the other side feels as optimistic. I don't think anybody wants another 18-month longer process. It's not healthy for an organization to go through a long process of negotiations. It's not healthy at all.
I'm really happy that you're able to do interest-based bargaining. That's a process that enables both sides to get to know each other and then build up trust, and that will carry on after negotiations, that can carry on through the years, and it's a huge benefit if it works. I know over at Seattle, we went for three years one time, using the other means of negotiation, a confrontational style, that didn't work nearly as well. And your 18 months, I think, was the same sort of thing. But interest-based bargaining, if it's done right, is really going to benefit the organization way beyond even the contract settlement.
Well, that's the goal. Hopefully we'll parlay into, you know, day-to-day relationships being better. And so the impetus behind it really is not only to get the contracts solved, but to just have better working relationships, and if the, you know, tactics that we've used in this are effective in this process, I'd like to see them, you know, be deployed throughout the organization in just solving day-to-day work issues, because any organization has them, every organization has them. And so we need to have better, and that's happening not just with this. We've, you know, rolled out trainings with our managers, we just had one called Communicate to Connect, and we'll talk more about that next month for our managers and supervisors. We're trying to give ourselves more tools to be able to deal with discord in a workplace and how to be able to, you know, create better lanes of communication for everybody. And so it's not just this process, it's really, it's all of it we're throwing at it, but we really need to get the negotiations right, and so that's going to be important.
I appreciate the transparency. Sounds like everything is on a, is on a good track. I agree that, you know, both sides ultimately want the same thing. So, you know, appreciate, appreciate the openness and the authenticity, and it sounds like, sounds like we're taking the right path. And also, you know, you had put in a lot of time and investment into being, you know, an open communicator with things like your weekly updates, and it's not just, you know, meeting at the table every two years or whatever it is, but it's that ongoing relationship that it's been great to see you initiate and continue, and it sounds like, you know, those types of weekly updates and your style is well-received, especially with you being willing to work at the branches as well. I think that goes a long way in people understanding who you are and your authenticity as well. So it sounds like everything's on a good track. Thank you for the update.
Thank you for that. I think it's super important, right, in terms of taking the time upfront to set good intent or, and really want to acknowledge both sides for coming to the table in a spirit of one team and learning a new way to go about what everybody really wants together, which is to create a great library. So we look forward to, you know, future productive negotiations, and may they not take 18 months. With that, we're down to our next meeting date is Tuesday, June 27th, here at the Norm Dix Government Center, preceded by a Strategic and Long-Range Planning Committee meeting and the monthly Board of Trustees meeting at 5:30. Hope we have more people joining us. Looking for more information on the website, up and coming, and there's no other, unless topics for next month's agenda, I think we're kind of occurring them as we go. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.